Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, do we have any public discussion?
Yeah, there'll be a public discussion. Had some, that's my fault, we didn't get on the agenda, but we'll have National 4-H Proclamation Week for this week, and want to recognize that.
That's this current week?
That is this current week.
Okay.
I was pulling up the...
Jack, you got the message, great, too, pretty exciting.
You read your mind. Never thought your outfit would be so popular, did you?
No. We're all green again, dude.
All right.
We can read that when it comes in later.
Okay, sounds good. Anything you guys want to say about it?
Do I have to do it?
No. Every year, the first week in October is National 4-H Week, and that's nationwide. So, in Cassoot County, we do different things each day during the week. We're celebrating National 4-H Week and promote the program within the county. And we go to each school in the county and have a special theme for each day. And we departed in the Band-Aid parade, we took off the week. So, just lots of activities that we do all week long to celebrate it and promote 4-H. We have two hundred, just about two hundred 4-Hers in Cassoot County currently. So, and well over forty, probably pushing fifty volunteers by the time it's all sent down a fair and everything. But, that's the 4-H program.
Great, yeah, appreciate all you do. I know we've got a good group down in the Laverne area there and all across the counties. I know you guys had wanted us to read the proclamation here, so you want me to go ahead and read that?
Go for it.
This is, "Whereas 4-H is America's largest youth development organization, supporting nearly six million youth across the United States with the skills to be ready to lead for a lifetime. And whereas 4-H has helped countless youth in Cassoot County to become resilient, innovative, and forward-thinking leaders during the more than one hundred years of service in Iowa, equipping young people with leadership, citizenship, and life skills needed to navigate in ever-evolving global landscape. And whereas 4-H is delivered by cooperative extension, a community of more than one hundred public universities across the nation that provides experiences where young people learn through hands-on opportunities in agricultural and natural resources, communication and the arts, healthy living, leadership, and civic engagement, and science, technology, engineering, and math that build critical skills, ensuring they are prepared to thrive in their personal, academic, and professional lives. And whereas, the theme for this year's National 4-H Week, Beyond Ready, highlights the organization's commitment to preparing youth to meet the challenges of tomorrow with confidence, resilience, and a sense of purpose, while showcasing the remarkable ways that 4-H youth in Cassoot County work each day to make a positive impact on those around them. And whereas 4-H youth are beyond ready to lead with innovation, creativity, and a commitment to making a positive difference in their communities and beyond as proactive and engaged citizens. And whereas Iowa 4-H's network of six thousand seven hundred and eighteen volunteers provides caring and supportive mentoring to all 4-H members, helping them to grow into true leaders by fostering skills like decision-making, public speaking, and teamwork, ensuring that they are beyond ready to lead in their communities and future careers."
All right.
You still know the flag, do you?
Let's hear it!
You go, Kyle.
You were reading the proclamation, I could leave it to you.
We will recognize National 4-H Week then here in Cassoot County.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
Can you forward that to me, Karen?
Yeah.
We got the clearer thinking part now.
Clearer thinking.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
You bet.
All right, anything else for public discussion? Here none. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda in minutes. Okay, motion in second, is there any discussion?
I missed the second.
Jack. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Monthly update from secondary road farming. Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What do you guys know today?
Get mowing done. You're testing them mowers out. There's a lot of them. Lot of material there to get rid of, it's hard on them.
Yeah.
And it's dirty and dusty up top.
Yeah. You just have to put it up for winter, because it's up like, you know, fast ones.
I was surprised at the number, just kind of bushes growing on the side of the road.
There's roads we got two football, not all.
You guys have a lot to go, or how's progress going?
We're just getting a first pass, and we got, I've got three and a half territories of first pass yet just to do the top edge. We haven't done any ditch or back slopes or weeds growing, or, you know, we've done black ops. We got ten more to do, and something up for itself.
Well, at least we haven't had any snow yet or talk of it.
Thanks for jinxing it.
Fortunate forecast.
It's a month.
Shouldn't really use swear words.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
You gotta, you know, you have to eat turkey before you put the ring on. Let's hope it says that way.
Yeah.
That's what Ray Mayday always said, you eat turkey and then you put the ring on.
He's right.
Who would do that?
Yeah. All right, any questions from board, anything else? All right, thanks for coming in.
Thanks for what you do.
There are H.C., I don't see them.
Their information is in your package.
All right, let's get to transfers from the auditor. Are there any questions on that, anything you want to say?
Nope, it's our biggest, one of our bigger months because of taxes.
Any questions from board? Matt will acknowledge the transfers. Could have told Doug to stay.
Oh, is it way up to him?
No.
Yeah, you want to give him a call?
Or maybe he's still, he'll probably run after him.
He'll probably be there, buddy. Well, you try calling, I'll try walking.
I doubt he's all the way down there yet.
He's talking with the foreman on a couple things. Do you want to do drainage, quick? He said it might be a little bit.
Yep, go ahead and do that.
I can run down there, too.
No, I did.
And, uh, you should stand in the way of...
We had kind of talked about that one before, didn't we?
Yeah, we talked on it last week.
Yeah.
Do you have any issue with it? I don't.
No.
She's got a couple options in here, like the tenth or the fifteenth. I mean, I would think we could just do anything in October, anything till the end of the month or something. I don't know if it makes a big difference.
Tenth will give you a couple of days, the fifteenth, that leaves it until next week.
Yeah.
I'm going to extend.
Well, we can't do a motion, we just lost our secretary.
We got a margin here, too.
Yeah, we'll wait till we're actually ready to roll here. All right, more than a margin. All right, we are going to jump ahead to the waiver for DD-110 South Maine. You got October tenth and fifteenth as possibilities in here.
And if that works.
Is there, is there any issue with doing the whole month of October? Or like, is there any times that we need to keep in mind?
The treasure, I'm used to the process.
Sooner the better.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have a list of people who get older that want to do it?
Just the one, because not after me, so...
And then it doesn't really matter?
Yeah, the fifteenth?
Yeah.
I'd make motion to extend the waiver till, for DD-110 South Maine till October fifteenth. Is there a second to that? Jack, seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. All right, and then we've got a claim for PAC one, main tile, it's in a folder. Anything you want to say on that?
It's, um, it's a joint drain, but all of it is in all of Alton County.
Okay. Okay. It's eight hundred dollars, that is in our packet. Any questions on that? Is there a motion to approve this claim? Motion by Jarks, I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. And then repair request. It's like I have several here. First one, uh... Oh, yep. Carter, you want to pick it up?
Yep, we got number one oh seven, and DD-130, section nine of Laverne Township to Don Bash. Obstruction in fifteen inch main.
Okay. Mine, I got one oh five, Jerry Saffner to repair, replace an animal guard on outlet pipe in Greenwood, section five. Then, on that same area, he wants to investigate plugged, a blocked or broken tile in Harrison thirty-two. And we've got one for one oh eight, is for Eldon Haas in Lincoln nineteen, large washout, needs repaired. One oh nine, it's also for Eldon Haas, broken tile, large washout, flagged in Lincoln fifteen. That is what I have. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, let's see, if I just take care of the request.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Anything else for drainage, Mark?
Yep, the last Wednesday, I went on site visits with FEMA, there were four sites. Quite the crew, all caravan of cars all going out there, but, um, no, that went fine. So, moving forward with that. And then I did meet Nathan Schmidt from Bolton Mank over in Whittmore that last week, and did televise the tile going through town there. I need to watch some of the others through, it's a very funny one, so, yeah.
Okay.
Need to look at that culture you have here, get a plan to put together.
Was the water level pretty low?
Yeah, it wasn't bad.
It was good?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it was, it's been running all summer, it's just very little running.
Yeah. It slowed down.
Took a while to get down, but, yeah, we haven't had rain for how long.
All right, anything else for drainage here? All right.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. What's that?
I got two more requests, one's in your area.
Okay.
Nicole?
Yeah, yeah, and I said another one.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Mark.
Sounds good. Um, Doug, construction right away?
Uh, yes, we've got a few things just to talk about. First one would be Iowa Lakes Electric Cooperative. They have a request to eliminate an overhead utility and place it underground, a service line. This would be going under McGregor B forty, two hundred tenth street, east of Forty Avenue, between sections ten and section three of Whittmore Township. And I would recommend that the board would approve of this request.
Motion approved, report. All right, is there a second? I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous.
Who's second with that? All right. If you'll sign that, please. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
The second discussion point, I guess, is Dennis Bolling has approached us about doing some, crossing Thirty Avenue up north, north of three hundred eighty-five street, between three eighty-five and three ninety streets. And he has submitted applications, however, he does not have concurrence from the downstream landowner at this time, and we are expecting that at any time. If Dennis would provide all the paperwork that's necessary, does the board have any concerns about giving verbal permission to him to cross that gravel road?
That's five of them.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we do have a final payment for the bridge on the both Holmarten Road. The total, the contract was six hundred thirty-one thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars. The ending, uh, bridge cost was six hundred twenty-nine thousand, sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. Uh, all of this is federally funded, but we do need a signature from the chair, Kyle. So, if you would sign that, please. And then we have plans ready for the bridge north of Sexton, for the board to sign these plans. We're planning to have a letting date on November twelve, so we'll get this advertised, get it out to contractors, so that they can bid on this work. So, if the board would sign those, please, and just pass it down. Thank you. And that concludes all the requests for construction of the road, I believe.
Yeah, yes, nothing about that one.
Uh, we have programmed four hundred thousand, however, looking at some of our most recent bids, I think it's going to be higher than that, but once we're put together, estimating proposal, we'll have our estimate, we'll build a bid, we'll, we will make that engineer's estimate. And then we'll go through the public as well.
Yeah, go forward for discussion, yep.
Um, we did receive a resignation from an operator of bankrupt, like bankrupt job, so we are going through the process of getting that position replaced. Uh, the safety action plan meeting we had last Friday, Chris Mueller did attend, and Doug Crouch, we did not have very many people attend that, but thank you, Chris, for doing that work. It was a productive meeting, and we were made aware of some different opportunities for funding, and some, also some different safety, um, situations where we may be able to use some different safety plans. One thing that got brought up interestingly is painting of edge lines. They value that quite a bit, especially in curves, but off-the-road runoff, which rural areas have, is needed, and I would hope that the board will fund that in the future. Uh, I do, we do need a tag trailer, we lost one. It is, I think it was a nineteen ninety-two, but we are planning on trading that in, and I am taking, I did get a request for quotes out, taking quotes on that, and I'll have that for the board to approve that purchase next week. Road Department, we have a safety meeting November fifteenth scheduled, and that would be at the Nature Center. Construction, the Bridge of Maryland's are working on right now, they have driven the south abutment, they have the north abutment, North Pier and South Pier all completed. We did not, uh, we had some problems achieving bearing with the piling, so we are extending the piling, and we are, we'll drive them until they do achieve bearing. Uh, after that, they'll pour concrete, we would assume that that's going to happen this week, and then they will be getting all their false work constructed and getting that deck formed up. So, I would assume in a couple of weeks, we'll have that concrete bridge poured. Uh, the drainage district sixty, north of Sway City, they have one more road crossing, four hundred and eightieth street, and I believe that that should be, if not the end of this week, the beginning of next week, and then that'll have all the road crossings completed. Uh, the cove out to the southeast of Algonah, hundred thirty-two avenue, that is completed. Cross pipe on A sixteen, that work was completed last week. Uh, we are working with FEMA on the two disasters, and we continue to get that going. We're mowing, the road department is mowing. The railroad crossing on P twenty, we're receiving a lot of phone calls trying to get to the railroad on that. Remind you, the public, that there are blue placards on each railroad cross buck, if there is a problem with an intersection, and it does have a identification for the intersection, and it does have a phone number to call, and the cross can, the public sure can do that as well. But there's some, ultimately, the railroad's responsibility, those crosses. Have you talked at all about the TIF, Tammy?
No, uh-uh, no.
Do you want to speak, or?
Go ahead.
Tammy received the concurrent statements for cities last week, and sent them out to all, all the cities in Cassoot County, as well as Corwood and Buffalo Center, as I correct?
Correct. Um, Corwood, I don't believe has received theirs yet, I'm waiting for a phone call back with a good email address, so that email address I had came back, but, um, so I'm waiting for them to get ahold of me, but Buffalo Center, um, yes, I did send theirs.
And last night, Friday, the city of Wesley requested that Tammy and I visit with them, or attend their meeting, which was last night, we went over there. They had quite a few questions, but they wanted their attorney, their city attorney to do that letter of concurrence. So, the letter of concurrence is out. I think it would be good for the board, we have our Plan A, Cassoot County has a Plan A, you may want to play devil's advocate and ask what, what happens if the cities do not give concurrence? What is the board going to do? November twelfth, is it?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Because that is the, that is the last date that if you're going to have this action taken by this year, that has to be done.
That's when the public hearing is going to be, so, um, if I understand right what Amy told us, she's going to ask you to waive the other readings and just do the one reading, so you'll approve it that day on November twelfth, if I understand it correctly.
Yep.
If the cities don't conclude, do you have to just have a bigger area around the city?
I think you just can't include those projects that are listed within the two mile radius.
Right, you just have to map off, right?
Yep.
What projects are listed is any construction on secondary roads, because Cassoot County has jurisdiction over them, so you would have to rephrase that.
So, you didn't send the list that we had?
Yeah.
You just sent everything?
Yeah, they have everything, yeah.
The attorneys, they replaced it.
They put it in that language, okay.
It's not specific projects, but the language is?
Yep.
All secondary roads, all roads and bridges.
Okay. Thanks for going to that last night.
You're welcome.
Anything else? All right, thanks, Doug.
Thank you. Thanks, have a good day.
Thank you too.
Discussion, we're thorough.
Okay, so like Doug said, we were in Wesley last night. Um, I know Carter, they mentioned they may be reaching out to you. Um, I did tell them that I didn't know if you'd have a lot more than what Doug had given them, but they may be reaching out to you as well to attend?
Who's that?
The city of Wesley.
Oh.
To attend their next meeting.
Council meeting.
Yeah, they were going to reach out to their attorney and then maybe put it on their calendar for November, I think, 4th, maybe they said, um, if they're having their next meeting.
It's election day, or not, it's the day before.
Day before, because they're, it's set for the 11th, but that's a holiday, so I think they're moving it to the 4th.
Veterans Day.
So, um, I think that's when they're having, so they may be reaching out to you about that, too, that they were going to reach out to their attorney.
Their next one's November 4th?
I believe so, yes.
I'm just going to write it down, just so it's there.
Yeah, so, um, and then, um, none of the other cities, um, have requested any further information other than what we sent them. I know Whittamore was having it on their agenda last night, they have not heard anything from that yet, so, um, we should be hearing things as we go, so I'll keep in touch with them, um, make sure that it's not falling in the cracks, so.
Thank you.
Um, next week, we have, uh, approving the resolution to set the date for the public hearing on the designated, um, expansion of the urban renewal, so we'll set the date for that next week. And then, um, except for our regular stuff, that's all I have, um, for next week. The editor's office is busy with elections right now, lots of absentee ballot requests coming in, we can start mailing out ballots October 16th, so next Wednesday. Um, we're getting ready to, for our trainings, our public tests, remember, the 15th next week, I guess that's not in there, but, um, our public test is at 10 o'clock, so hopefully you guys can attend, um, will hopefully be done by 10, and you guys can come over. Don't have to stay the whole time, but at least observe some of what happens during the public test. Um, so, yeah, we're right in the middle of election season, and that's pretty much all we have. Um, I did want to mention, um, about our sanitarium, um, if you guys want to talk to us afterwards, just a couple, um, cleanup issues with this office and pickup, so, um, we're going to be working on that, um, and then decide how to move forward with that position, so.
All right, thank you. Um, for discussion and committee reports, back.
Wasn't able to attend the last Thursday, however, I had to, uh, not attend, uh, due to a tour, so, uh, I saw it again, so I wasn't, wasn't able to attend it, and there's, next week's a board health.
We had an IDVA meeting Wednesday, um, we had some discussion on drainage laws, quite a bit of it had to do with levee districts, and if people want to separate the levee district out of the drainage law. The problem with that is, you, all the precedents that we have now in drainage laws, we all be telling now, we start all over again with all these court cases, so it's our opinion that we leave it alone, let it as it is. Um, the levee districts on the Missouri have been neglected, and that's part of the problem. Um, getting ready for legislative action, and talking to representatives, and that's majority of what we did this month, next month, we'll have a plan for the annual meeting, which will be December, or is it December 6th? Same place, same time. Any questions? Pretty smooth, there's only four of us there.
Do they have any update on the legislation from other, or the lawsuits, the litigation from other counties, like we got with the railroad?
We've been asking, and no other counties changed with litigation with railroads, it's all the same thing, the railroad is claiming that they don't have to pay, and we're saying that they do, and our attorney says that they have to pay, so, so far, we haven't went to court yet. I don't know how close you are over there.
Probably a ways away from court, but I think the last thing was just a response from our attorney, but I don't think we ever got a response to that yet, so, I mean.
There's about three other cases that are very similar.
They, yeah, they, I think we got to the point where we're not arguing about the actual merits of the project at all anymore, it's just who's paying for what, so.
They're, they're, now they're at, they're at the point where they say, yeah, we'll let you cross.
Do this.
Not, no problem, it's just the money part that we're dealing with, so.
What day did you say that was, on December 6th?
6th.
Do you know when that, is that 9:00 or?
It's usually 9 o'clock, but usually you got lunch at 8:30 or whatever.
Breakfast, so.
I think we always all go, most times, and...
Yeah, hopefully we can make some progress all the way across the state on that issue. That's a lot of dollars.
Well, there's, I'm not supposed to, I would really appreciate that tile work.
Yeah. Me too.
Because they have, that was a big area this year up there, didn't have nothing.
Oh, it's a big area that's been drowning out for 30 years or better, probably.
Yeah, it's been dead for a while.
All right, anything else?
I just bothered.
Josh?
I had no meetings last week, um, tomorrow we can have, uh, our house, my team with that, uh, meeting, and then I've got the TSC afterwards, the tech services here, meeting.
I had wellness last Wednesday, um, not too much going on, I guess, uh, and then met with FEMA, that was probably the biggest thing last week. Yeah, that's about it.
Did you turn in three sites?
We turned in four sites, FEMA, and I guess waiting to hear from them, but got three bids from all the contractors. Or bids from three contractors for all the sites, as I would say.
Sounds good. I don't think I had anything, so, all right. Anything else? For the, for the county here? If not, then entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. 8:39, is that a record?
Yep.
We've never done it.
Four minutes faster than me. Could have talked a couple of minutes.